Eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Mr. Aho, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Felber.
Here.
Mrs. Kane Criswell.
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Tore Waldron?
Here.
Mr. Stuber is absent.
I was, uh, if you could all rise and please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. So for those watching at home and those out in the audience today, we send our regards to our board president who's under the weather. So I'm gonna pinch hit, just like Ohio State, next person up, so bear with me. We do not have any agenda items, any changes, I believe, so, um, the, the board president's report's gonna actually just be that, that we wish Mr. Stuber a quick recovery. And I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, the superintendent for the superintendence report. We do have special recognition tonight for Wilcox Primary, George Dodge Intermediate in Twinsburg High School. I know that's what many of you are here, so we'll get right to it.
Thank you, Mr. Felber. Good evening, Board of Education. Good evening, families and students. We're always delighted when our families come out for our board meetings, and we have so many things to celebrate, um, this evening. Before we get to that, there are a couple of announcements. Uh, Mr. Aho, I am not certain that Mr. Corey is, is he? Oh, he is here. Very, very good. Uh, Mr. Corey is representing Auditor of State David Yost this evening. And, um, if you were with us at the board meeting of two weeks ago, you know that, uh, Mr. Aho has been awarded a significant honor, uh, because of the fact that he is an excellent steward and makes sure that our district, um, financial records are a hundred percent top-notch. So this evening, uh, we welcome, uh, Mr. John Corey.
Thank you. Um, as the superintendent said, uh, my name's John Corey. I'm regional liaison for State Auditor Dave Yost, and, uh, the reason I'm here tonight is to recognize Marty and his whole staff. And actually, we did have Auditor Yost at the end of February was able to personally present the award to Martin, and, you know, we're really happy he had the chance to do that, and, uh, we'd like to recognize school districts, uh, three years in a row now to win this award, so that's really, you're really rare company. Only about five percent of our governments that we audit win this award, so congratulations, and, uh, I have the award here. It's the Ohio Auditor of State Award with Distinction, and it is presented for excellence in financial reporting for your comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending twenty fourteen. So congratulations to Marty and his whole staff.
Mr. Corey, on behalf of the school district, we really do appreciate you coming this evening on, um, Mr. Yost's behalf.
Oh, no, thank you very much. I was supposed to be at the last meeting and apologize a little family issue, so.
Not a problem at all. We are delighted, um, that you're here, and we're so proud of Mr. Aho and his staff. Trust me, he makes sure that I follow the directions that he gives and crosses my t's and dots my i's when it comes to.
That's what we like to hear. Normally, people get scared when the auditor's office is coming to a meeting, but in this case, we're giving good news, so.
Really good. Thank you very much.
So thank you very much. Thanks, Marty. Take care. Alright, thank you.
Mr. Stuber, pardon the interruption, but just one, uh, housekeeping. Uh, we have been asked by the, uh, the Fire Department, Police Department, uh, for a matter of safety that we can't have anybody in the aisles, so we do have some seats down here and down front. We can't have anybody standing in the aisles, unfortunately, so we're glad to see you. Uh, there's overflow in, into the lobby, um, but unfortunately, we gotta keep the doors, doors clear.
Thank you, Mr. Felber. It helps that you're a fireman, too.
I'm off duty. This is all the water I got.
Uh, thank you, parents. We were, um, in a meeting last week with Chief Noga and Chief Morgan, uh, the police and fire department chiefs, and, um, they always wanna make sure that we're safe, including when, when we use their building here at the government center. And they have reminded us that when we have our meetings here in the Twinsburg Government Center, that we have to keep our aisleways clear and the doorways clear, too, so we're just trying to follow directions as always, and we do appreciate your cooperation with that. Well, Board of Education, I am pleased to, um, uh, report to you that we, um, again, this week heard that, um, through some efforts of the staff at Wilcox Primary School, we are awarded a forty-eight-hundred-dollar grant from the Summit County Alcohol, Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services Board. And the purpose for this particular grant at Wilcox Primary School is to increase parent engagement, and when Ms. Villa and her staff wrote that grant, um, they're always very interested in making sure that our little ones have the very best when it comes to literacy skills and starting their early school years, really being able to read well. And so we're going to be using this forty-eight-hundred-dollar grant to have two parent workshops, um, between now and the end of this calendar year, and it's all going to be about guided reading strategies that parents can use at home. So if you have a child at Wilcox this year, um, or you have a little one who's going to be registered for kindergarten here in the next couple of, uh, months, uh, uh, keep an eye on our website, and we will be announcing when these workshops will be for our parents, and we appreciate the Summit County, um, ADM Board for their generosity. Uh, the more opportunities that we can, um, have to partner with our parents just means great benefits for our students. Um, speaking of parent workshops, this is a brand-new announcement. Under the direction of Ms. Jen Farthing, our curriculum director, we're going to host two parent workshops entitled "Your Child's Brain: Uncharted Territory," and the presenter will be Dr. Lisa Regal. Um, parents, if you were involved last year and the year before with some parent workshops at our elementary schools, then you've met Dr. Regal. Dr. Regal is a professor at Cleveland, I'm sorry, at Ohio State University, oh my, and, um, and, uh, she does a lot of work for us here in the district when, uh, talking about students' development. And so she will be back on March thirty-first and again on April sixteenth. It's a two-part series from six-thirty to eight o'clock PM, and the workshops will be held at Samuel Bissell Elementary School. We're gonna post a flyer, um, on our, our website on our Flyer Central link, and, uh, this is open to parents with students from kindergarten all the way through grade twelve. So if you're interested in the topic, again, Dr. Lisa Regal will be speaking on "Your Child's Brain: Uncharted Territory" on March thirty-first and on April sixteenth from six-thirty to eight o'clock PM. Uh, Lisa does a great job. Um, she's just a, a wonderful presenter. She has children of her own, and she speaks from the heart, very, very smart lady, so we hope that you're able to join us. Um, Board of Education, I wanted to say a few things this evening about our local officials, because within the last month, I have to tell you, we have been so indebted to the officials here in our city of Twinsburg, Reminderville and Twinsburg Township, and I just wanna give you a couple of examples of why I'm saying that. Uh, first of all, we, um, have reconfigured our kindergarten registration, as you know, and, uh, this year we moved off-site, and we're using the Twinsburg Community Center. Thanks to the generosity of our Parks and Rec Department, um, kindergarten registration has gone off without a hitch, and we do appreciate their hospitality, so we thank them. Um, Chief Noga and our SROs Ron Frisella and Greg Kopnisky cosponsored a workshop called "Hidden in Plain Sight" last week, and that was also under the cosponsorship of the school district and, uh, Mrs. Denise Trapeg and our Director of Pupil Personnel. And, uh, just did a great job of helping parents understand some risky teen behaviors that they have to be aware of. So we appreciate Chief Noga and our two SROs, too. Also, last Friday night, we had a great basketball event, our Dare Basketball Game between the City Services, the Fire and Police Departments, and our teachers. Have to say the teachers beat them. That was very fun. Um, but the goodwill that was generated by the, the game was just great, and the proceeds benefit both our Dare program and our school district, as well as our, um, high school bas-, uh, baseball team. So great, great event. And then finally, if you have a student at RBC, you know, last Friday was a little bit of an intense day, because, uh, while, uh, serving our first lunch period, um, one of the ovens caught on fire. And so we had the response from the Twinsburg, uh, Fire Department, as well as the Reminderville Fire Department. We're on-site pretty quickly. Um, the students who had evacuated were allowed back in the building within, say, ten minutes. They had to stay in the, the gymnasium until the, uh, smoke cleared from the building. Uh, but things were back to normal pretty quickly, and we do appreciate the fire departments and their quick response. And I wanted to ask Mr. Welker if he could just do a shout-out, because when we have a fire in the kitchen, obviously, we can't serve lunch, and, um, thanks to, thanks to some quick thinking on the part of Mark Business, our Food Service Director, and Mr. Welker, uh, we put the call out for help, and I want you to tell our community what great help we got from our local businesses.
Thank you. Uh, so I, I just wanted to thank, uh, three local pizza shops that, uh, chipped in with ninety-five pizzas to help feed our, our youngsters, and they, they, uh, they made them in, in less than two hours. Uh, we, we had, we had, uh, shifts, and so thank you to, uh, Giannino's Pizzeria, Teresa's Pizzeria, and then, uh, Teresa's Pizza, and also, uh, Master Pizza. Um, just, uh, when talking to the delivery people, uh, the shops actually brought in people, uh, to help us, and it was just, uh, ve- very nice to see the local pizza shops just, uh, chipping in, uh, to, to help us in a time of need, so tha- thank you very much to those three, three organizations.
You know, that day was, um, pretty stressful for the adults in the building, but we happened to see some of the students at the basketball game that night. They thought it was the best thing ever to get that pizza for lunch, so, uh, thank you to our local businesses, and if you can, um, be a patron to them, we sure do appreciate all that they've done for our school district.
I will, I will say, I think I had about a hundred kids come up to us, uh, and saying, "Let's do this again."
No, no.
Maybe just the pizza part.
Right, just the pizza part was what I said, right.
And then finally, Board of Education, just a reminder, as I mentioned a bit ago, it is time for kindergarten registration, so if you have a young one at home, um, that will be turning five years of age before August first of this year, now is the time to register your child for kindergarten class, our Class of Two Thousand Twenty-Eight. I can't believe it. Um, tomorrow, um, at our Twinsburg Community Center, it will be the third of three opportunities this spring, and then there will be an opportunity to register your child in June and, uh, again in August. But the sooner that you let us know your child will be coming to our school district, the better we can do, uh, with planning for him or her and making sure it's a great transition to school for our youngest Tigers. So if you are interested and you have a child who is turning five before August first, please call Wilcox Primary School at three-three-zero-four-eight-six-two-zero-three-zero to make an appointment to register your child, and we do appreciate your assistance with that. And so, Board of Education, that's all my comments for this evening. Um, I know that, uh, Ms. Villa had, um, has a family, um, concern this evening, so Mr. Scott Asti is here tonight, and we're gonna celebrate some outstanding Wilcox Tigers. So Mr. Asti, if you'd please join us, and, uh, Mr. Felber.
Mrs. Tore Waldron.
Awesome, and Mrs. Tore Waldron will present some great pins. Boys and girls, this is a really important and special occasion for your families, and so when you come forward tonight, what you wanna make sure that you do is shake hands with Mrs. Tore Waldron, and she has a pin for you on behalf of our Board of Education. And then you wanna shake hands with Mr. Asti, who I know that you know, he's our Assistant Principal at Wilcox, and then, of course, you wanna shake hands with Mr. Welker. He's the pizza guy, and then, um, and then.
That might stick.
Right. It will. And then, boys and girls, if you would please just stand on the front here on the stage until we get all the boys and girls up front, because then your moms and dads are gonna want a nice photo of you, okay? So here we go. Getting, getting old. Talk about Class of Two Thousand Twenty-Eight. You don't wanna know when I graduated. So beginning with our kindergarten children, um, from Ms. Kelly Sutton's class, we have Jana Anderson. Jana is a superstar. She is such a kind, caring and respectful student in the classroom. It is such a joy to teach her every day. She always tries her best and is always being respectful, kind and courteous to those around her. She's a wonderful role model for the other students in class. Mrs. Sutton is so proud of her, and s- she is so deserving of this award. Jana Anderson. Next, from Mrs. Washington's class, we have Gabrielle Briggs. Gabrielle is a hard worker and an extremely dedicated student. Although she is soft-spoken, she is always willing to participate. Gabby is such a positive role model and an asset to the class. Keep up the great work, Gabby. Next, from Mrs. Petris's class, we have Sophie Jalapi. Wilcox rocks because of Sophie. She is a kind and caring little girl. She is always willing to help out her classmates, especially when they need their shoes tied. She follows all school rules and always does her very, very best work. Mrs. Petris is so proud of Sophie and happy she is in her class. Here's Sophie. From Mrs. Troy's class, we have Allison Rotko. Wilcox rocks because of Ally. Ally is a super cooperative student. She listens to and follows directions the first time they are given. She's a wonderful friend, takes turns and is kind to everyone. Ally loves to write. At the beginning of the year, she worked very hard to learn her letters and sounds, and now she writes books almost every day. She is such a motivated learner. Ally Rotko, you really rock. Next, from Mrs. Seidel's class, we have Ivy Squire. Ivy is truly a joy in the classroom. She follows the rules and is respectful to all. Ivy is kind to all of her friends. She is always the first to volunteer to help her peers in stations or during whole-class lessons. She brings joy and a smile to all she encounters. And finally, from Mrs. Truscheck's class, we have Gianna Taylor. Gianna comes to school daily with a smile on her face. She is caring, helpful, kind and a great friend to others. Gianna gives her best work at all times. She has worked very hard this year and continues to grow in all areas. Gianna is a real pleasure to have in class. Congratulations. Now moving up to the big kids, our first graders. From Mr. Scolero's class, we have Sophie Kakuza. Mr. Scolero nominated Sophia for the Wilcox Rocks Award for many reasons. She is a very hard worker who always tries her best. She is respectful and polite at all times. She is always willing to lend a hand to help out both her peers and her teachers. The most important reason Sophia was nominated is because she has such a great attitude. She is always happy to be at school, and her smile is contagious. Great job, Sophia. You are why Wilcox rocks. Next, from Mrs. Littler's class, we have Gavin Davis. Gavin is an excellent role model to his class. He has a great personality and always displays a positive attitude. Gavin works great with others, is a wonderful friend to his peers, and is always willing to assist his classmates in whatever they are doing. He's a wonderful listener and enjoys participating in class discussions and activities. Gavin is very respectful toward all of his teachers. You rock, Gavin. Next, from Mrs. Scolero's class, we have Nathan Duda. Mrs. Scolero has nominated Nathan Duda for the Wilcox Rocks Because of Me Award for many reasons. Nathan comes to school each week and every day ready for work. He puts forth his best work in all that he does. Nathan follows all directions and demonstrates appropriate behavior in the classroom, the hallway and his specials. He is an excellent friend, always speaking kindly, complimenting others' good work and ready to lend a helping hand. Mrs. Scolero was fortunate to have Nathan in her class and is confident that he will continue to rock throughout his academic career in the Twinsburg schools. Thank you for being an awesome student, and congratulations to Nathan. From Mrs. Lennox's class, we have Edward Lee. Edward is an outstanding student and citizen. He is always ready with his supplies, an open mind, ready to learn and a positive attitude. Edward is very conscientious and completes all of his assignments in a timely manner. He is willing to help others and is an active participant in class. Way to go, Edward. From Mrs. Zenz's class, we have Ellie Popa. Ellie is one of the hardest-working first graders Mrs. Zenz has ever had the pleasure of working with. She comes to school happy and positive and ready to learn. Ellie is very, a very great friend to all students and has a natural ability to help others, especially those with special needs. She is very kind and has a passion for wanting to learn and be the best that she can be. Wilcox is definitely a better place because of Ellie. And finally, from Ms. Lipnose's class, we have Sophia Taylor. Sophia is a sweet young lady. She is a leader by example. Sophia shows everyone at Wilcox how to act with her excellent behavior and wonderful work ethic. Sophia is a wonderful student and role model to everyone. Thank you, Sophia, for being such a wonderful young lady. Please join me in congratulating these wonderful Students of the Month from Wilcox Primary School. Now, boys and girls, if you could hold your certificate with the words on the outside, right in front of your tummies, okay? Because I know your moms and dads would like a nice photo of you for your photo book. Okay, and everybody put their toes on the, on the wood at the end of the stage there. There you go. Okay, and your great big tiger smiles, please. Alright, one more round of applause for these wonderful students. Thank you, boys and girls. You may be seated. Okay, we're gonna shift gears and ask that Mrs. Wursler and Mr. Holland from George G. Dodge Intermediate School come forward. Good evening, Mrs. Wursler and Mr. Holland. Oh, and Mr. Hyam is here, too. Wonderful. Evening. And Dodge Tigers, just like our Wilcox Tigers did, when you come forward, please shake hands with Mrs. Tore Waldron and Mrs. Wursler and Mr. Hyam and Mr. Holland, and then please remain up forward here at the front so that at the end, we can get a nice photo for your parents. So at George G. Dodge Intermediate School, these students were selected from their Cub community. They stand out from other students with their outstanding leadership qualities, citizenship, academic performance and efforts, social skills and overall accomplishments. We are very proud to announce the Bear Cub Students of the Month. So to begin, from our fourth grade, we have Shane Duffy. Next, we have Manasi Patel. And we have Skylar Young. From our fifth grade students, we have Makpreet Randawa. And Elliot Schneeman. And finally, Harajat Sidhu. Moving up to our sixth graders, we have Isabella Huss. Christian Knuckles. And Erin Wallace. Please join me in congratulating these outstanding Students of the Month from George G. Dodge Intermediate School. So guys, if you could take one step toward me, because, uh, the podium's kind of in the way there, and hold your, um, certificates forward, and we'll give your moms and dads an opportunity to take a nice photo of everybody. I am very proud of each and every one of you. Congratulations to our Dodge Students of the Month. Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you, students. What I'd like to do right now is I'd like to introduce a couple of staff members that have been it to an Employee of the Month, and we will start with Mrs. Victor. She is on the Bear Cub. She teaches not only math and science, but she also spends a portion of her day working on social skills and tapping into our PBIS, PBIS program at Dodge, enforcing respect, responsibility and safety. She serves on our BLT Committee, and her expertise in looking at the big picture is invaluable and greatly appreciated. Congratulations. No, Anne, stay up here. Yeah, nice try. Next, I'd like to introduce her partner, Mr. Durinzo. Like Mrs. Victor, he spends a portion of his day enforcing the PBIS program, respect, responsibility and safety. He teaches Language Arts and Social Studies to our sixth graders. Mr. Durinzo is a positive mentor to some of our boys and works hard to meet the needs of the whole child beyond academics. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. And Mrs. Wursler and Mr. Hyam and Mr. Holland, thank you for being with us this evening. Okay, so now we're gonna switch gears again, and I'd like to ask Mrs. Louise Tringo, the high school principal, to come forward. And we have some wonderful students and staff members to recognize.
Good evening, everyone. Um, we're gonna start first with a special event that occurred last Friday. I'd like to call up Mr. Ryan Bonnetz, who is our band director and our band teacher at the high school. First, we wanna congratulate Mr. Bonnetz and some students that he brought tonight. He's gonna tell us a little bit about what happened on Friday evening.
Well, thank you for having me. Um, on Friday, uh, March thirteenth, uh, we took our concert band to the annual Ohio Music Education Association's, uh, large group adjudicated event. It's, uh, basically an annual event where, uh, our students prepare a list of three selections that we play, uh, for four adjudicators. These adjudicators are either current or retired music teachers, and they provide feedback, um, based on how we perform. And the end result is if we do well enough, uh, we actually get to qualify, uh, for the state event. We currently competed at the district level this year, um, and then if we did well, we would move on to compete at the state level. Uh, this year on Friday, we had our best showing that I believe that we've had in Twinsburg history, so the band, uh, got a superior rating of a one. It's a scale of one to five, so it was the highest possible rating. That's the first time that we've gotten such ratings since two thousand and ten, and for the first time, um, in Twinsburg history, uh, we got straight ones, meaning every judge, uh, gave us the highest ranking, um, possible, so it was a really great accomplishment. Um, I was asked to speak about this a little bit, but it wouldn't make sense to just have me speak about it, so I did bring, uh, some of our students. I have, uh, our band council president, Senior Rob Garrett, um, our. Our drum major, uh, and senior trumpeter, uh, Mr. Gordon Weiss. And, uh, freshman alto sax player, Mr. Peter. And freshman alto sax player, Mr. Peter Weiss. They came up to help us out a little bit. For us, the very next step, like I said, is because we qualified for this state event, we will perform again. We actually have a whole new round of music that we're preparing for. And May 1st will be the state-level performance. Some people would think state. They would think Columbus. We're actually performing at North Royalton either on May 1st or May 2nd. If we do well enough there, we actually receive a distinction from the state of Ohio through Ohio Music Education Association for excellence. So it's something that we're really hoping for, and it's just a tribute to how hard the kids have worked this year and all the years. So I'm just really, really proud of them for everything that they've done. And I'm glad to, I don't know, have the opportunity to conduct these guys. They've been great. So, thank you.
We're looking forward to May 1st, and we'll let you know how our band students do. Thank you, Mr. Bonnetz. Bye, guys. Thank you. I'd like to call up Mr. Silverthorne. We're ready for our six Tiger Strong Students of the Month. We highlight six students that just, a random act of kindness, are just doing something right in the school. And our teachers nominate them. We choose six every month. And so I'd like to start there in alpha order, okay? So if I could call Marina Baker up. Okay. Marina doesn't know why she's here tonight, so I'm gonna give you a little reason why, Marina. I'd like to nominate Marina Baker for Student of the Month. "I fell outside walking to the car," and anyone knows this winter with the ice and the cold. "I fell outside walking out to the car. She was on her way into the building. She stopped. She helped me pick up all my stuff that was scattered all over the sidewalk. I just cannot believe that she offered to just take such good care of me, and she helped me to get everything to my car as well." That's from Ms. Rosales. She says, "Thank you."
Our next nominee is George Baynard. George, come on up. George was very instrumental in helping de-escalate a situation between two classmates in his class. George went above and beyond. He was very helpful to myself during this little issue that we were dealing with. So I nominated George, and George is a great kid, and I really appreciated his help. George Baynard.
Next up, we have Luke Dimizio. Luke, come on up. I think Luke Dimizio should be recognized because of the dedication and time he puts into the wrestling team's success. He volunteers to drive two students home and to every function so that they can participate. He organized all of the team workouts during the snow days. He is the first to practice and last to leave. One day a week, he goes home to shower and eat after practice, then returns to school to volunteer with the youth program. He excels in the classroom as well. Overall, I just thought this student is definitely worth it to be Student of the Month. Thank you so much, Luke, for everything you do. And that is... That's from Mr. Monacki.
Our next student, Jared Eaton. Jared... Jared was nominated by Nancy Drain. She says, "Jared's been a phenomenal leader in Spanish 1 class. Every day, he's polite, pays full attention, works hard in class, volunteers and participates, helps other students around him who may be struggling, does a great job outside class assignments. He stands out as a leader in class, a great peer, role model to his classmates, and demonstrates how to be courteous, engaged, successful student." Jared Eaton.
I'd like to nominate Prablim Moltani. Prablim, come on up. Prablim has been an awesome leader in the Spanish 2 class. She is such a hard worker and always strives to do her very best. She is always engaged in class and volunteers. She goes out of her way to include a student who usually does not have anyone to work with for group activities. She's always there to help. This shows great character. She has been an active and involved member of the Foreign Language Club. She volunteered to help our food drive during her study labs and also after school. Thank you so much, from Senorita Drain. And those... And I have one more.
Our last Student of the Month is Madison Posk. Madison was nominated by Mark Masalona for her diving accomplishments, being a great overall teammate during winter swim season. Madison's not only an awesome diver, but also an awesome student kid. Again, nominated by Mr. Masalona. Congratulations, Madison.
Gifted athlete that Maddie is, she's pole vaulting right now, so she's gonna give her that certificate. Thank you so much. And thank you to our parents who came tonight to support our students. Certainly Tiger Strong, but we owe it all to the backbone behind the Tiger, and that's our parents. So thank you very much. Students, do you want to hold up your certificates for a group shot? Awesome. Thank you so much.
Twinsburg High School always does so very well. We do appreciate all that our students do. Thank you for being here this evening. And parents, thank you for always supporting our students from their little ones at Wilcox all the way through Twinsburg High School. We appreciate all that you do to support our students every single day. Thank you, Mr. Felber. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. Now is a good time of the meeting for those that might have to go do some homework, read some bedtime stories to their parents. It'd be a good time to go. You're more than welcome to stay. We'll just pause for a moment. Okay, I think I'm gonna continue our meeting, and we're at the portion of the meeting where we have committee reports. Any colleagues have committee reports?
I have small reports. Mr. Felber, you might want to just pause for a second.
All right, we'll wait one more minute. Those waiting at home are waiting for the room to empty out.
Mr. Silverthorne, if you could, you might want to shut the door. There's a lot of folks in the lobby this evening. Thank you.
Okay, I think... I think the audio will support our committee reports now.
I'm gonna start with athletics. Not too much going on. We're transitioning from winter to spring sports, so we're getting all of our spring practices and things in order now that the snow is starting to melt, so that's a good thing. I do know that a lot of the spring programs have started, so if your children are interested, you can definitely make sure they're getting involved in that. I also wanted to recognize some people. Last weekend at the police officer and fireman versus the Twinsburg teachers game, the T A B did their Hall of Fame introductions. And I wanted to recognize the people that made the Hall of Fame for 2015. We had Lauren Maser, Dan Grummett, Ryan Selman, Brian Miller, Brad Stuber, Jim DeSico and John Curry. We congratulate all of our former alumni athletes. They have gone on, and several of them have done great things above and beyond their high school and college careers, so we commend them on that. And they will be receiving a plaque, and they also will have a plaque in our new Hall of Fame trophy case, which is located outside of the gymnasium at the high school. So if you have an opportunity, take a look at that great trophy case that the school, in conjunction with the Booster Club, built in the last year. So congratulations to all of them. And for buildings and grounds, just some general TLC around the properties. As most of you know, this winter was very tough on our asphalt, on the roads and our driveways. So we're gonna be having a meeting here shortly to go over plan of attack on parking lots, driveways, as well as talking about, we are going to be putting new turf on the football field, and we're gonna be talking about that as well. And that completes my report.
Any other colleagues? Any other reports? Finance committee is scheduled to meet March 25th at 5:00 p.m. Board Office. Is that working?
Yes.
Okay. No other reports? Being a business meeting, there is a section of the meeting that we have for public comment that is called remonstrance. I'm just gonna read a little reminder of what remonstrance is, and then we do have some cards. Persons wishing to address the Board of Education must submit a blue card, and those are out in the lobby, to the treasurer prior to the meeting so they may be recognized by the presiding officer, and welcome to make a comment. No formal action will be taken on subjects that are not included on the agenda until the board has had an opportunity to study them. Comments regarding personnel must be submitted in writing through the office of the superintendent. Although there is normally adequate time for citizens to express themselves at the board meeting, if several people wish to speak, each person will be allotted five minutes until the total time of 30 minutes is used. And each person addressing the board is asked to give their name and their address. And we do have two blue cards this evening. Mr. Bambler, if you'd like to go first?
Good evening. My name is Richard Bambler. Reside at 3454 Cannon Road here in Twinsburg. As you know, the past six weeks, several concerned parents, including myself, have met with various state and federal representatives. Been quite surprised at how little seemed to be understood in these meetings regarding legislative changes. These changes occurred in the past few years in conjunction with Common Core initiative and directly affect the privacy of our kids. Therefore, I thought it would be beneficial to speak about the legislative changes and what we have found that raises alarms. As you all are aware, the Common Core standards have been in the works since before 2009. Some of these hurdles the state encountered while setting up data gathering systems in the past were the laws prohibiting them from doing so. So the laws had to be changed in order to get the information that we are paying companies like Pearson to collect. It started with the gutting of FERPA in 2012 to loosen the language to allow personally identifiable information to transfer easily to third parties. The old student-level data system in Ohio was only collecting information from grades K through 12. The student-level data systems are changing from K-12 to the new system called P-20. P standing for children from ages zero to five. In the old system, information was only gathered by state-funded... The information was only gathered by state-funded education facilities. But because of law, the information from other state-registered facilities could not be shared with the Ohio Board of Education. To get a true understanding of how kids were developing, they needed to get all of the P information they could get. To gather this information, they wanted to align all state, all state early childhood, post-secondary education, workforce, social services and other critical state agency data systems with the State Board of Education. The other hurdle is the 20 part of the P-20 initiative. The 20 stands for higher education and workforce data. A mechanism for sharing transcripts between schools and higher education did not exist. This had to be changed as well. You cannot go from 12 to 20 without further changes in law. So how do you build something like P-20? Twenty was... Money was hard to come by in 2009 unless you were the federal government. The state of Ohio got their money, $5.1 million to be exact, in a grant called statewide longitudinal data system recovery act grant. This grant established the money the state needed to build the data collection infrastructure necessary to comply with the Common Core standards and align our system with all the other states. This makes interstate data sharing across state lines a simpler, more streamlined process. We have been informed that our children are issued a unique ID number. The bridge or crosswalk from that number to the individual student does not leave our district, as we were told. That's what we were led to believe. In the application, the State Board of Education says, and I quote, "Ohio is requesting funds to expand the ability of its student-level data system to link and share student data to ensure data can be accessed by stakeholders, whoever that is, to build the capacity for effective use of data and to provide professional development and training to stakeholders to ensure effective use of data." And it goes on to say, and again, I quote, "Funding is being requested in this grant proposal, and Ohio's race to the top proposal to enable Ohio to close the gaps between our current system and our vision for a P-20 student-level data system." The grant lies out the plan to create, and again, I quote, "user-friendly access to statewide longitudinal data warehouses." Throughout the district, although the district may think our information is safe in a vault that only they can access, the question, who has created a copy of the key to the vault without anyone knowing? I urge this board to read the grant application, all 135 pages of it. The plan to access our children's information exists, no matter what the state is telling you. I will now provide you with a flow chart of the new P-20 longitude data system from the grant itself. Please note all of the connections, and most importantly, the planned connections, to all of our children's data. Ask you why such a complicated data system if the plan is to keep everything at the local level. And finally, if nothing changes, I will be forced to remove my children from the Twinsburg Public School system for the 2015 and 2016 school year.
Thank you. I have one other card. Jennifer Radel.
My name is Jennifer Radel, and I reside at 10192 Alger Trail. I am following Rick tonight with further explanation of the state longitudinal databases, an example of how they are being funded and the information that is being collected. I started by reading you part of a letter that was issued by RBC concerning the NAEP or N A E P test given to some of our students in February. "We are pleased to notify you that Chamberlain Middle School has been selected to represent schools across the nation by participating in the National Assessment of Educational Progress, or NAEP. First administered in 1969, NAEP is the largest nationally representative and continuing assessment of what students know and can do in various subject areas. It is administered by the National Center for Educational Statistics within the U.S. Department of Education. NAEP is different from state assessments because it provides a common measure of what students... Common measure of student achievement across the country. The results of NAEP are released as the nation's report card, which provides information about student achievement to educators, parents, policymakers and the public." This all sounds great, until I further research the test and the author. In the pamphlet I've handed out to you, you will find... In the pamphlet I've handed out to you, you'll find several pages of sample questions that have nothing to do with student achievement. For example, how many books are there in your home? Do you have the following in your home? A, access to the internet. B, a clothes dryer for just your family. C, a dishwasher. D, more than one bathroom. Or E, your own bedroom. In fact, this sample test had seventeen pages of questions like this. I ask you, how does this measure student achievement? The next section in the pamphlet shows the test's author, which is the Institute of Education Sciences, who's on their about page on their website clearly states, "We help states work toward data-driven school improvement by providing grants for the development and use of the longitudinal data systems." The final section in the pamphlet is from the institute's report to Congress. It contains a full description of longitudinal studies, the development of statewide systems. To quote, "IES and the DOE have spent approximately $514 million and invested considerable staff resources to help states establish or improve P-20, early childhood through workforce, longitudinal database systems." I'll let you read the rest for yourself. So I ask you as a district, should we be pleased that we have been chosen to participate in the NAEP test? Or should we be finding out how we keep from feeding our kids to this data machine? I've refused for my kids to take these tests this year and have made the decision I will continue to protect them next year by pulling them out of Twinsburg schools and enrolling them in private schools. My fifth grader hit the nail on the head the other day. After spending a shadow day at her future school, I asked her what her favorite thing was. Her response was, "I like that I was not expected to know something the first or only time that it was taught." It is a proven fact that all children learn differently and at different paces. The Common Core one-way approach to teaching does not work. I'll finish with a quote from one of the Common Core presentations I've attended. "We all want progress, but if you are on the wrong road, progress means doing an about turn and walking back to the right road. In that case, the man or school board who turns back the soonest is the most progressive."
Thank you. And I believe that concludes remonstrance for this evening. And we will move on to section G, the treasurer's report and recommendations. Without objection from my colleagues, I'll read these, the next three, G1, 2, and 3 as consent agenda. G1, minutes of the regular meeting, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes. Regular meeting of March 4th, 2015 is sent to the board under separate cover. Item G2, financial report, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the following financial report for the month of January 2015, bank reconciliation, general fund financial summary report, and financial report by fund. And finally, item G3, check register, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accept the check registers for the month of January 2015. The total, including payroll, is $4,030,534.75. Is there a motion?
So.
So moved by Mrs. Davis?
Seconded.
Seconded, yeah. You guys were like on the buzzer. Second by Ms. Kane Criswell. Is there any discussion? Anything, Marty, that, and these are regular?
Yeah, just regular items.
Okay. See, no discussion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Tore Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes, and that item passes for zero. Next brings us to section H. And that is items for personnel. H1, employment certificated, easy for me to say. Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accept the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit H1, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background check. Item H2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accept the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And finally, H3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accept the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit H3, as per dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. We have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Tore Waldron. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Any discussion? I wanted to draw attention to, let me get to the right page. Congratulations for the purpose of retirement, Margie Fox, receptionist at the Board of Education office. I don't know if you had additional comments, or we wish her well?
We do wish her well.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Tore Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And those items pass for zero. Now, I apologize, I have, we come to section I, where there are sixteen items. And without objection from my colleagues, I'm going to read this long list. Go with consent agenda. Item I1, media center items for deletion, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the attached listing of items to be deleted from inventory per the attached exhibit I1. Item I2, public relations consulting services contract, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a contract with Patricia Coslow for independent public relations consulting services from July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016, at an hourly rate of $55, not to exceed 960 hours, as sent to the board under separate cover. Item 3, donation from Verizon, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation of classroom supplies to the Wilcox Elementary School from Verizon in Twinsburg, Ohio, at the value of $150 per the attached exhibit. Donation from Target, item I4, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation of $922.07 to the Wilcox Elementary School from Target, Take Charge of Education, that's out of Minneapolis, Minnesota, for physical education equipment and staff meeting supplies, per the attached exhibit I4. Donation from Mr. Richard King, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation of $10 to Samuel Bissell Elementary School from Mr. King in Twinsburg for school supplies, per the attached exhibit I5. Donation from Twinsburg Rotary Club, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accept a donation of 315 student dictionaries to Samuel Bissell Elementary School from the Twinsburg Rotary Club, in Twinsburg, at an estimated value of $787.50. And that is exhibit I6. I7, optional tuition-free education, Board of Education policy 5111, resolve that the Twinsburg Education, Board of Education approves the Twinsburg High School senior, Maya Edwards, exercise Board of Education policy, again, 5111, optional tuition-free education, and remain a student at Twinsburg High School through the end of the 2014-2015 school year. Item I8, again, Board of Education policy 5111, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves Twinsburg High School student, senior, Jacob Fink, exercise Board of Education policy 5111, again, optional tuition-free education, and remain a student at the Twinsburg High School through the end of 2014-2015 school year. Item I9, school psychologist evaluations, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the school psychologist evaluation rubric to be effective beginning with the 2015-2016 school year, as per the attached exhibit I9. I10, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a primary service contract, as per ORC 3313.843, with the Quahog County Educational Service Center for the 2015-2016 and 2016-2017 school years, as sent to the board under separate cover. Item I11, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a purchase agreement for Twinsburg network upgrades, including the district core switch with CDW government out of Vernon Hills, Illinois, for the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement as sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. Item I12, district internet service provider contract, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the agreement for internet service with Northeast Ohio Network for Education Technology from July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2020. Further terms and conditions set forth in the agreement sent to the board under separate cover. Again, this is a general fund expense. Item I13, district managed internet broadband service contract, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the agreement for managed broadband service with the Northeast Ohio Network for Education from July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2018, per the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement sent to the board under separate cover. This is a general fund expense. Item I14, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following college credit plus agreements for the 2015-2016 school year, as sent to the board under separate cover. And these include Quahog Community College, Hiram College, Kent State University, Lake Erie College, Lakeland Community College, University of Akron, and Youngstown State University. Item I15, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal for an overnight extended trip for Great Expectations Show Choir from Twinsburg High School to travel to Wheaton, Illinois, for the Wheaton-Warnsville South High School Show Choir Invitational, March 12th, 2015 through March 15th, 2015. The trip is paid for by the students with the assistance from the Twinsburg Vocal Music Boosters, as sent to the board under separate cover. And finally, I16, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal for the overnight extended trip for the Great Expectations Show Choir from Twinsburg High School to travel to Fairfield, Ohio, for the Fairfield Crystal Classic Show Choir Competition, March 21st, 2015 to March 22nd, 2015. The trip will be paid for by students with the assistance of the Twinsburg Vocal Music Boosters, and this was also sent to the board under separate cover. Is there a motion for these, for all consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, who was that?
Kate.
Okay, any discussion? Mrs. Powers, any comments on any of these items?
I just wanted to just address a little bit, Mr. Felber, regarding number 14, our college credit plus agreements. Per the new statute, as a matter of fact, by the end of this week, the school district is required to enter into agreements with universities within the thirty-mile radius who are interested in partnering with the school district. And these particular colleges and universities have been in contact with me. We do have these agreements now. Tomorrow morning, Mr. Aho will certify, the board has approved this, hopefully, in a minute or so. And then they'll be sent to these colleges and universities. This is the first step in lining up our program of study for students at the high school and qualifying students at the middle school who are interested in participating in the college credit plus program beginning next year. So I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I also wanted to draw attention to a couple items. You know, communications is very important, and we have a lot going on with the website and quality profile. And I just wanted to once again thank Patricia Coslow for all her hard work in making us look good and getting the right information out as soon as possible. Also, I would like to thank Verizon, Target, Mr. Richard King, and I'm a Rotarian sitting to my left, Twinsburg Rotary Club, for their donations. I don't know if you had anything further?
Yeah, we did discuss it a little bit last week as far as the Rotary was able to donate dictionaries to all the children at Bissell in the third grade. So this is something they do annually, and it's just, the purpose of Rotary is to give to community. And so it's very nice that they're able to do that for our children. I know they really enjoy that, and I know my daughter is in the third grade, and she enjoyed her dictionary. So thank you to the Rotary. And I also wanted to thank everyone else that had donated. I did have a question about the public relations that we're doing. And just kind of wanted to get a better feel for what exactly, I know what she does, but if the community could kind of know, we're looking at almost $53,000 for, so what are we getting for that $53,000?
Sure, be happy to answer that. Ms. Coslow has been working with us now for the past three years, and we don't have an administrator on staff that manages public relations. And so this is a contracted services agreement with Patty Coslow. And some of the items that she assists us with is she helps manage the district website. She helps with the graphics behind our district newsletter, behind the quality profile, which will be coming out again in August of next year, I believe. Patty is behind the scenes assisting with the facilities assessment that is currently underway, our survey, and pulling together the results of that. So anytime that we have an initiative here in the school district that requires a special way of communicating, we're contacting Patty. Tomorrow morning, as you know, Board of Education, I will be presenting the State of the Schools address to the Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce. Mrs. Coslow was very instrumental in pulling together our PowerPoint presentation, which you will see tomorrow morning. So lots of PR communication strategies behind the scenes.
And I guess my only thing on that, is there any way we could get that number down a little bit? I'm just concerned about, we're being, you know, with the fiscally responsible, just, that's a pretty big number for me. You know, that's just my opinion. I don't know if anyone else feels that way, but I'm just concerned about that big of an expenditure on, is there any way to maybe cut that, or?
Does anybody else share a similar concern? My only experience is in the private sector.
Sure.
And that's considerably lower number than the private sector.
Oh, absolutely.
That's only my reference.
Yeah, and the only thing, I'd just like to see the money, anything we're spending, and it does have a direct impact on, if it has a direct impact on the kids in the classroom, or, and I know it's important for our district to have, you know, obviously, the website is huge. It's the way we communicate with our parents. I understand all that. I just, like I said, when I did the math, I was a little surprised at how much we were spending on it. So if everybody else is, you know, I just wanted to express my opinion, that's all.
Any further comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Tore Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And that item's pass for zero. Now, we're at the point of miscellaneous. Any of my board colleagues or superintendent? Chair, pizza man?
Yeah. Just something real quick. I, you know, have, for the past, I guess, six weeks or so, been, like the rest of my board colleagues, I think, and administrators, digesting the feedback from folks like yourselves that have been joining us every couple weeks and others as well, and regarding concerns related to the Common Core. And, you know, remonstrance is a difficult, you know, it's not really a give-and-take situation. So I, you know, I recognize, having been on the board now for, this will be my twelfth year, that it isn't an easy forum to share these sorts of concerns. I appreciate, Mrs. Powers, your interest in bringing information to our meetings regarding the work we've done on the Common Core, as well as the community's interest and engagement in it. I, for one, think that it's what's sort of interesting, or what I struggle with as a board member, is this is an initiative that, you know, began, I think, back in 2008. And so it was, it was surprising to me, frankly, that when we were one or two weeks away from part testing, the concerns that were presented. And not so much that there are concerns, but in some respects, it felt like, to me, we were crossing the finish line, and that's when concerns bubbled up. And not that there's anything wrong with that necessarily, as much as it was surprising to me because we've been talking about it for so long, and we've been preparing for so long, and we've invested so much financially in preparing our students, preparing our curriculum, preparing our infrastructure. We've purchased technology, none of which I think for not, if anything were to change. But it's, I guess, in some respects, that's why it's, you know, I'm wrapping my head around, I think, a lot of the concerns and digesting, and, but I also want to assure the community that, because several remonstrance have, you know, made mention of, you know, do your research. I assure you, for at least two years, I've been very familiar with the Common Core. This is not the first information I've heard about it, nor most of my colleagues. We have educational experts who lead our district and are very familiar with the Common Core. And while we may not have the depth of the specific concerns that perhaps you are bringing to us and sharing, there is no lack of knowledge of the Common Core and where it came from. And some of the, you know, at one point, there were forty-six states that were on board, and now many have, have... And some of the, you know, at one point, there were 46 states that were on board and, and now many have, have chosen to take different paths, but there's a variety of reasons too why they have. And they're all not, they're all not the same. The Common Core is a very expensive initiative frankly, and I can tell you that if you sat here and watched it. You know, watch Twinsburg, one district prepare. It's very expensive. I know for one, also from my work in the private sector, I understand the cost of this technology. I understand there's lots of districts who've not been able to implement it because they merely do not, or simply do not have the funds. So it's a very, and on top of all of that, it's in recent, in the past year, and I don't know, Mrs. Powers, you could, you could probably pinpoint it more precisely than I can, that the Common Core has become a political issue. So it started out, I mean, it's probably started in politics because it started with the governor's National Governor's Association, Janet Napol- Napolatino, who I think wrote up a, a vision and a goal. And that's what, and then she identified a commission who came up, that was composed of educational experts and politicians who came up with the building blocks that then created the Common Core. And so, you know, there were, there were quite a few educational experts involved. I'm not suggesting at this point that we're at the right spot or that your concerns aren't valid by any stretch. But I do share with you that there is considerable expertise, and I'm not even speaking for myself, but within our district, who understand a whole lot about it and probably share some of your concerns, maybe not all of them, but, but I, I guess I, part of, part of why I wanted to make mention of something during miscellaneous is I don't know that remonstrance is the easiest way to have this conversation. And I think we hear what you're saying. And I think this is an evolution, like any large initiative. It usually kind of starts one way and looks a whole lot different a year or two after it's been implemented. I have no doubt this will be the same, as is evidenced by this changes the states, other states have made in the past year, so. So, long story short, it's a hugely nuanced, complex topic with about a billion different opinions of its, of its value. And I hope we can continue the conversation. I don't know that we're going to necessarily agree and, but no reason why we cannot continue to share information and continue the conversation, so. That's it.
Anyone else comment for miscellaneous? All right, we do have need for executive session, so at this time, I will read the, I'll make the motion that the Board of Education enters its executive session at 8:14 to discuss specialized details of security arrangements for the Board of Education Policy 0160G and to review negotiations with public employees per Board of Education Policy 0160E. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane Criswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Tore Waldron?
Yes.
And that item passes for zero. There will not be any further business conducted after this executive session, and we thank you for your attendance.